It's Bill Murek. Are you muted? He's muted.
Can you do that around the table?
Okay, I'm gonna call the order of the Culver Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll call, please.
William Puniger.
Rosa.
Bill Giffins.
There.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally Ratchardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Stand for the pledge, please.
Of the United States of America and to the valley which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just want everybody to know that this meeting is being broadcast through Microsoft Teams so that the public will be able to participate remotely. The meeting has been recorded and participation in the meeting from the public given your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast at the recorded meetings. So people that are online, that's the way we're doing this. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I approve the minutes for the June twenty-second meeting.
I think most have been made to approve the minutes for June twenty-second. Is there a second? Most have been made by Rich and seconded by Bill Hamm to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we need approval for the May financial reports.
Actually, both.
Both.
May and June?
Since I just sent you now.
Okay, so May and June financial reports.
I would move that we approve the May two thousand and twenty-one and the June two thousand and twenty-one financial reports.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Bill Clevenger that we approve the May and June two thousand and twenty-one financial reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have visitor center update. Matt?
I'll go ahead and get started. I'm Tracy Fox. I'm president of the Visitor Center Board. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to give an update about what the Visitor Center has been up to over the last couple of months. Also, thank you to the Town Council for your continued support of the Visitor Center. I really appreciate your support over the years, and it's been really interesting, but a really active couple of months. Certainly, a year is what I'm really just gonna talk more specifically about the last couple of months. And I think a couple of things, and Matt's gonna have some handouts that highlight some of this. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight are the our ability that we're actually now really doing a lot of promotion across a number of different platforms. So in addition to traditional Facebook media and Facebook, we're also using our websites really actively, and it's gotten really, really good traction. So they listen closely for that because I think it's really important to recognize how we're crossing a lot of different platforms, and that really seems to be helping drive traffic. One of the other interesting things that Matt's been able to do over the last year is really capture a lot of data for the people who are interacting with our various social media sites, and that's really helping us target even more some of our activities going forward. So Matt's gonna give a little detail about that, but I also want to thank Karen and Marty who are here as well, who are also on the Visitor Center Board and Rich as well. So we have a great, really excited about what Matt's been overdoing since he's been on board for about a year. So I'll throw you in now.
Great.
That's fine, right there. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come before you again, and I'm looking forward to continuing partner with to continuing to partner with the council and various Culver organizations to continue to strengthen and amplify, which we hope to reinforce our mission to increase tourism, to support our local businesses and economy. When I presented to you in March, I presented several of our goals, and first and foremost, I spoke of our need to update and review our digital marketing, and this has been going extremely well, and I'll be detailing that a little bit more in a second. But doing this is due greatly in part to our successful follow-through with Two Six Digital, which is a media destination management. They specialize in destination management organizations like ourselves, typically small towns, that and to help us with digital marketing. So I connected with them in March at the Visit Indiana digital conference, and as a result of that, the Visitor Center website, findculver.com, was updated in March with analytics hardware, which we can use for tracking a variety of information about our metrics and our audience. We have been tracking weekly and continue to do so to improve our outreach. We've also been linking a lot of our social media posts to drive traffic to our website, and this has proven successful when we look at the month-to-month turnover since March. We've also been using QR codes, which allow us to look specifically at what's any ads that we have put a QR code in, we can tell directly that traffic has come from that. That's been very helpful as well. Another one of our goals has been to expand our message into likely audiences by geography, and I think we kind of knew this, but it's definitely been reinforced that our top markets are regional, which is Northern Indiana, Michiana area, followed by Indianapolis and the northern Donut Counties and towns like Carmel, Fisher, Seinville, and then Chicago. We've also, and since March, we've had six acceptable campaigns in two of those three markets. For Indianapolis, as you're all aware, we did a partnership with the Indianapolis Decorator Showhouse, and last month I passed out, hopefully you all got it in your box, the copies of the magazines, the programs, and some statistics that came about because of that. Basically, we had a advertisement in both Indianapolis Magazine and in the and in the program, and then as a result, the ad buy, we also got a nice two-page spread in the Indianapolis Monthly Travel Travel Supplement that was part of their May issue. So we were able to get all of that with a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar ad buy through the branding campaign. And then for Michiana and Northern Indiana in June, just a few weeks ago, again, hopefully you're all aware, we posted Jack Springgate from WNDU New South Bend, and he's been doing his One Tank Visits series this summer, and we were delighted that Culver got picked to be one of those. WNDU has a broadcast area of ten counties in Northern Indiana, as well as two counties in Southern Michigan, so that fit right into our geog- the geography that we are trying to target, just based on people that we know are interested in Culver and coming here. Because Culver has such a wealth of material, which surprises none of us, but always surprises those who come to Culver, he was very, he was very excited not only to be able to do the six-minute segment on the news, but also he did four spoilers leading up to the news that were sixty minutes each, and that included one that was specifically directed at Lake Fest and the fireworks. And then if you have not had a chance, I did want to share the first sheet with all the colors, the very brightly colored sheet. That's gonna be our ad thing. We're gonna get it one more push. It's gonna be in Lakes Magazine in the next issue, but the main reason I wanted you to have that is because it does give you the the website, which is our website, and the direct link that you can go to to watch the four different pieces that aired. All of those are up and running on our website. Our third market is Chicago, and Chicago is a little bit more tricky. First of all, just due to the expensive advertising in the Chicago market, and I think that has come up before, and we do have some ideas and we're pursuing them, but it's also Chicago's obviously such a big market that just a general, like, we have to figure out exactly who to target and who would be appropriate to target in that market. But I'm pretty excited since March, two of the three of our markets have had really successful campaigns. So then if you want to look at the the two sheets that have some statistics and some graphs, I'll be talking, I guess, about the statistics kind of first. So Lake Fest was also a big draw, and we could see a direct correlation between our promotions and visitors to our social media platforms and the findculver.com website. The Visitor Center promoted Lake Fest in May with a half-page ad and in June with a whole page ad in Lakes Magazine. And as I mentioned, we had one of the segments of WNDU South Bend teaser segments done specifically for Lake Fest, and it was mentioned in a couple of the other segments as well. We also got in contact with Visit Indiana, and they do a festival email blast in June, and so we got Lake Fest onto that, and that goes out to over forty thousand of their subscribers. So we were included in that. And you can see almost pretty much directly that the the WNDU was on June twenty-fourth, and you look at that graph, there's pretty much a spike that starts right about June twenty-fourth that starts to go up. Later, we're in Lake Fest, and obviously lots of interest in Lake Fest, and that spike really went way up during Lake Fest. With people looking at the website, we may, we had the entire Lake Fest schedule, both on our site with buttons that lead directly to the official Lake Fest website as well. So regardless of whether they came to us or if they needed to get to the Lake Fest website, we did that. We also had backups of all of their forms and stuff. Should anybody have it be on our page and be looking for parade forms or forms to rent booths for Lake Fest. We also had follow our following our followers on social media platforms, both Instagram and Facebook, have also continued to increase, and we are getting much more savvy about using those to direct traffic onto our website, which in turn provides information for visitors to plan their trips. And I can say that since June first, I followed up on at least sixty direct inquiries that have come either through a phone call directly to the Visitor Center, through a form on our website that says, if you have any questions, contact us, or just answering through Facebook and Instagram through the Messenger contact. And those were all unique, specific, you know, what are the hours for the beach, to are there any boat rental slips still available, to Lake Fest questions, and where are the forms for Lake Fest and stuff like that. Of course, print media is also still very important. The Culver Citizen has followed up with a lot of everything that we've done, we've made sure to include the Citizen, and they they published, you know, to include what we're promoting, as well as the town gallon lake email goes out to make sure that everybody's aware of anything that we have going on. A couple smaller, but no less important partnerships that we've done, we partnered up with the Lake Max and Huck Environmental Fund and the Culver Parks Department to just have our map and information and some bags that they passed out to all the owners, or not owners, but all the renters of the boat slips this summer. We did limit what we put in just to those who are not local, so anybody outside Marshall County that had a boat slip rental, so we could get our information out. We also had them over at registration for the Culver Summer School, and we passed out over four hundred of our brochures during registration at the registration for summer camp. And we also had continued to be working on the Culver Welcome Wagon Baskets, and so far, we've out, and I would like to just publicly thank all of the organizations and businesses that have helped participate in that. The feedback on those have been great. Everybody is really impressed with everything that has gone in there. So these are just a small, a very small sample of the metrics that we can pull and the things that we can do, but I just want to emphasize that everything, everything's starting to work together and moving, and we're really getting a good idea of who's coming to Culver, who's interested in Culver, where we should be placing our energies, and I'm really excited about that, to continue to do that. So any questions?
Council have any questions?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Matt, I've got one. How's the response on the one tank trips? Did you get any feedback from WNDU, and how was it?
I haven't, I, well, I've been in touch with WNDU, but in in their business, they move directly on to the next story once they're done. But just in talking with various business owners, they, I've had multiple owners say that they had people come in and they said that they had heard about.
And seen them.
They saw it on TV. And I know there was a lot of positive energy in town after it aired.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of people were excited, especially, you know, when you get to see their friends or people, you know, on TV.
I know a certain shot that had a major surge with the two new browns of the news.
Well, the weather was perfect when they came down.
It could not have been a better day. Yeah. We were down to two days, and the second day was after that, and when that came around, it was not a good day. So I was so glad that we ended up with a good day, but we landed on, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had a question. On the website, do you have a link to that, by any chance, the PBS that did that Our Town Culver, they ran Sunday night. I caught it by accident. Yeah, I watched it. I saw, I learned some stuff. I guess I missed it first time around.
All I have is the DVD, but if I can find a link, I take, you know, time just to hook it up.
Well, even on the other public station, not the one originally, so it's out there somewhere.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Ready Grant?
Yes. So the Ready Grant that I wrote you guys about, mainly a heads up on what that's about because you're probably seeing press releases by now. This this particular grant is being managed through regions, so this, the state is requiring that you be part of a region to submit a project. We are already part of the South Bend Elkhart Region, and so if Marshall County communities or entities want to submit a project, it has to go through that. And their deadline to collect all of the projects is this coming Sunday, July eighteenth. So we kind of learned a bit about this last week, and some of the people on the Crossroads team have met to discuss particular countywide projects like Blue Zones that you guys have been hearing a lot about. The Education Skills Committee is submitting a project for a skill center. So there's some brick and mortar projects that are being submitted at the countywide level, and by that I mean, you know, various organizations, whether it's the Crossroads team or elsewhere. The one project that we thought we could submit in Culver was the one that we did not get the ARP grant for in the park, which is the multi-use basketball court. And one reason we felt like that might be one to submit for Culver is because there's already private money raised for that project. We also had budgeted local money through council and the park budget when you guys approved of going for that grant the first time around. So we already kind of meet the financial structure, and the Ready Grant would provide twenty percent of the project cost. So that's one we feel like it's already a shovel-ready project. This would give us a little extra grant money versus us paying out of pocket if we move forward with that project. But each of these ready projects, you have to have twenty percent local dollars, twenty percent is the grant, and sixty percent is privately funded or otherwise. So very typical, say, development, like housing development, where you have the developer putting in a sixty percent, locals the twenty, and twenty is the grant, and it's working very much like regional cities in that perspective. You guys remember how regional cities worked. So our Crossroads team is entering some projects like Blue Zones, the Skill Center, there's an art and culture project being entered, and a large group of Crossroads committee members is working on that set of projects to get this submitted by Sunday. But we would like to move forward with submitting the basketball court, multi-use court for Culver project. All of the communities can submit projects in addition to other organizations, nonprofits can submit a project. So that's the only one that we really could think of that was sort of ready to go, and that met the kind of structure that they're looking for, and we would submit it as a brick and mortar type of project because there'd be construction involved if we were to get there.
Do you want a motion to that effect that we approve the?
Yeah, I don't want to submit anything that we don't locally agree with submitting.
Question on the first. I mean, I support going forward. I think we had the sixty percent. I think we have just under fourteen thousand dollars in the in the fund, the park fund that has been raised for Alex Paray. So with that, is that the sixty percent, and then the other go back into that?
Yes, we would be able to count that toward private dollars because it's all coming from private citizens who donated. We could, even if we're short by, say, three to five thousand or something, we could raise that through crowdfunding, or we could go back out and say, hey, we need another extra account, depending on the total budget, which is around thirty.
You'll say it's forty with in kind, so it's probably around thirty-two, thirty-three thousand.
So the so the total budget for it then would be roughly forty?
Forty. We already have about ten thousand in kind, fourteen thousand from Alex Paray, and you all.
We would serve as the local piece of it.
Yes.
Is there a motion to include the basketball court in the Ready Grant?
I would move that we proceed with the Ready Grant with the project for basketball, the multi-generation use of the basketball court.
At the park.
At the park, and then authorize the president and the council to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Most have been made by Rich and seconded by Sally that we go ahead and submit the basketball court for the Ready Grant and authorize a made to sign forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Phil, this is all done electronically online, so we probably just need to put your name as president of council. I don't feel that's.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Tracy and I'll get together. She's been working on this. And then I have offered to work on one for the Crossroads team that would help fund the actual Crossroads team. You could do a program versus a brick and mortar as well on the Ready Grant. So I spent some weekend time and evening time and a couple of meetings during the week that hopefully the county will get several in because we didn't get in on the lily round that the region had, and so I think they really want to help fund Marshall County projects, which would be great.
I know you've been instrumental in working on this, so thank you. It's really good.
Although the Crossroads team has really stepped it up.
Right.
To help out, and Tracy's really stepped up to help us out. The people who's working on this. So we kind of came in at the eleventh inning, or do they call it the eleventh inning stretch, whatever it's called.
Eleventh hour.
Yes, that's it. I don't know, baseball.
How many metaphors can we add?
Anyway, it'll get done.
Sounds good. Moving on. Electronic meeting policy.
You want me to take this one? As you guys know, Jim provided a resolution that would allow us to have electronic meetings. Karen and I also attended a webinar. So the way Jim wrote the resolution is this is written based on what the state would require, and I don't know if you've all had a chance to review it from Jim's email, but basically, the webinar explains that you can be even more restrictive about your policy, but not less restrictive than the state. So Jim has based this templated resolution on the state. So there's certain things in here, for example, like participating, if you're participating electronically, only fifty percent of your council could, so you can only have two doing that at a time. The others have to be physically present. There's also, you can only do two meetings in a row or what they call a set, and then your next meeting, you have to be in person. So you can't just keep doing it all year unless you're military or you have an illness. So there's certain stipulations about that. And we could certainly add to this if you wanted more rules. Like, we will only allow council members to do it twice a year or unless they're ill or military or et cetera. But it's up to you if you want to make it a more restrictive policy than what's here in the resolution, or you can pass the resolution and go with the basic policy. We can modify it later if we wanted to. It's kind of up to what you guys are thinking. If anyone, yeah, I've got extra here.
What's council's wishes on that? You want to just do something tonight, or you want to look at it for a couple of weeks, or go ahead and bill?
Well, the question I have is that toward the end, messages must be broadcast for a definitive period of time, and in general, not to exceed a month. And I'm just wondering whether a month is a little long to have a message on a message board that people are gonna just be used to seeing that, and that I would for a shorter period of time, like two weeks.
He's got the wrong policy.
Yeah, you're looking at, we're looking at the electronic meetings versus electronic.
You're on the message board, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay. We'll get to that one next, Phil.
I think, I mean, I support it. I think it's a good idea. I think to continue to.
To go ahead and do it tonight, go ahead and pass it tonight, and then we can always.
Objection, or, and as Judy says, it could need be, we can modify it later. I think it's a good idea to have the policy in place, given given the fact that we're still not out of this situation with the pandemic, and that so that's my thought.
I would agree with.
You want a motion to that effect?
The emergency order still stands as well, too.
Right.
For this, so until.
And you still have to wait until the end of July.
Right.
Which is actually more restrictive.
Yeah.
You all are very good about attending. That's not always been historically the situation. So I, I guess my comment that I sort of said at another meeting was, you know, thinking down the road, you know, would you have somebody that would want to participate more so electronically and if that's okay with you guys, then that's fine. If you want them there more often, then you may want to give some thought to tuning that up.
Up front, this.
Up front, I mean, you, this is, this is the basic that the state statute has, I think. And you get this adopted and you're good to go, and if you need to tweak it later, you can.
There are certain things that if you're participating online versus in person, you cannot vote on, like the budget.
Yeah.
Can't be a vote approving the budget from remotely. So there are a few little things like that in the resolution that you want to be aware of if you you can vote on other things, but not necessarily that is.
Can't reduce personnel.
Right, you can't.
Close the fee or penalty.
Kind of the biggies that you would have to answer to the public for.
Right.
They want you voting in person for.
Point. Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion been made by Bill Hammond, seconded by Bill Clevenger to approve the motion, to approve the resolution as presented regarding electronic meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Does this have a number?
No, we don't have it on yet, but you can.
Depending the number, motion carries. Next, we go to the electronic sign policy.
Yes, so I cast out what I emailed you. This is just based on some research and talking with Karen and kind of trying to think through the requests we're going to get. And, you know, basically, because this was paid for with Oprah Grant colors and there was some partnerships at the county and Marshall County Tourism, we are obligated by that bring it up to allow both those entities to message on our boards. That's the first thing you're going to see is that they, they basically have a right to send us messaging that they would like posted, whether it's about a pandemic, about an event or tourism, et cetera. So we've outlined that in the policy. Then we tried to think through what other types of announcements, we've got informational announcements from the town itself, from Culver Community School Corporation or Culver Academies, announcements related to community events like festivals, park events, et cetera, countywide announcements and Marshall County Tourism announcements. There's also communication panels that we want to be open to. But we also wanted to say, there's certain types of messages that we think would be not allowable. So personal messages to individuals. I want to get in the business of wishing everyone a happy birthday or congratulations. Nonprofit announcements and once they're the latest major event. Otherwise, we could be making thousands of announcements for nonprofits, same with the faith-based organizations. From a content standpoint, we tried to think through, you know, copyright issues and that sort of thing, so we put that the town of Culver has sole authority to approve of who can provide messaging content that goes on the board. This might even include approval of the message itself, you know, we certainly don't want to have certain types of inflammatory messages. At any time, the town can remove a message from the electronic board, that we should be open to that. The town does not have resources to verify copyright or trademark laws if the creator of the content does not have permission to use a logo, for example, or plagiarized content, we prefer not to post it. And we could potentially require documentation of copyright. Generally, only one message per event or promotion or activity. Messages would be broadcast for a definitive period of time. In general, wouldn't exceed a month without the approval of the town of Culver. We put that approval would, could be granted by town manager, the clerk or the council. And those who are not granted access to submit an message autonomously will be required to follow a process that Karen and I are going to outline a process. So we might, we might allow, for example, if the software allowed it, we could give Karen and Culver Academies their own access and they could do something separate from us. But otherwise, someone will have to follow our policy and that might mean you come to town hall, you fill out this form, we approve whether it goes up, we need the date, you want it to start, the date it ends. You know, we'll, we'll outline those steps for the public's purpose. So that's kind of what we came up with and.
One question, on the first bullet point, where county tourism, et cetera, county, is there a limitation on how much they can do that, push down to this? So it'll be in a cap?
Yeah, we technically, no, if the Marshall County Crossroads or Marshall County Tourism or the county have a message, they've got money in this board, so by the Oprah sort of standing, we have to allow it. And certainly, I, I would hope the county's not going to send us thirty messages at a time and.
They send you too many, just get in touch with them and complain.
Push back.
Okay, I wonder on the other side though, too, how, what do we have to do in order to push our messages out to the countywide system of boards and anyone's like with Lake Fest or
Yeah.
something else that may be going on?
I think what, the way it probably will work, and we're going to probably discuss it at our Crossroads meeting, it may work through the marketing and communications team of the Crossroads group because that group is connected to all of the communities and we do want some cross-promotion of events, you know, Main Street events, tourism events, and we want to start doing some inter-local events, like, you know, Bourbon's going to have a pickleball court and a basketball, multi-use court like we are. Assuming we get ours done, we'll have one, Plymouth has one, so we thought, wow, we can do tournaments and stuff. But it takes some coordination, so I think that'll probably be key, Rich, we're still working that out, though.
Also, on the, the piece about the nonprofits, unless it's a major event, and I guess we'll probably do this by experience as we go along, but for example, the Lions Club with Pancake Breakfast, is that a major event? Or is that just, you know, if something like that be published, would that meet this criteria?
We talked about how it means going to be angels. It's going to be tough, you know.
I mean, from our experience at the visitor center on posting things there, it's the same, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah. Fish drive versus, right.
A land, a line in the sand and then, you know, it's just like.
Well, the Lions Club has their own.
They do, or, yes.
But all the other nonprofits don't.
Right, no, I understand that, yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's a complication to get that word out that you know, unless you're struggling with the town, you might not see it on the Lions Club board, but you're for basketball, say, with ten, then you get it on our.
Now, I guess, on the other, I mean, I, I, we was looking at allowing school or visitor center or academy to also post, but they would need to meet the criteria that we understand, who sends the signboard does belong to the town, is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah. And right now, probably we'd have to get approved through us versus them doing it autonomously on their own.
Okay.
I want to go back to this, second to the last bullet point, though, I think that will not exceed a month, I think that's an extremely long period of time for a message. I would suggest or give thought to two weeks instead of a month.
The, the nice thing about the way this is programmed is you can actually set it so you can choose the days that you want a message to be up, so it might not be every single day. So I don't know if you've noticed, I think we've got a message for the, the meals at the, at the school. That just runs on the weekends up until Monday and then it stops and then it's off for the week. So there's some, you know, you could, you could schedule it out. So maybe there's not a message that runs every day for a month, but maybe it runs a couple of days or a couple of days a week, four months, I would, I don't, I would, I guess I would advise against, you know, compressing things so much that it gets very rigid. And I don't know that anybody's really going to come and say, I want something advertised every single day, because that is just going to you know, watch, people are going to start doing it.
Well, if it runs, you know, periodically, then I, I don't have a problem with it, I didn't understand it.
Yeah, and I, I eventually put that in in general, will not exceed a month.
Right.
Like, yeah, we don't know how flexible we need to be and we try to keep the language a little bit flexible and vague, just to be, because I think as we get into it, we'll learn and go, oh, we definitely needed to be this or that or.
Sure.
I, yeah, I think, I don't think, there's a lot of, I don't think any of the communities in Marshall County has a policy yet for their electronic board because they reached out to them when we first got it. And so we're kind of paving the way, so I think as, as things come up, I think we'll all be kind of communicating together to kind of tweak this and fine tune it so that it's effective. It can be an effective tool for a variety of entities, including the town and also not get so like right now, it's very boring because there's, there's not a whole lot going on. You know, before Lake Fest, we tried to have Lake Fest things coming up, Karen's got some registration things that we'll start putting them to. So, you know, we'll, we'll get there so that it's an effective tool.
Work in progress.
It is, it is.
There's a, oh, go ahead, Rich.
Excuse me, in the original design intent, was there any discussion as far as commercial opportunities with this for the ad space?
Yeah, so with like, with an Oprah grant, for the first five years, you have that project, you can't profit off it to a certain extent. So we could charge for messaging as long as we don't make over a certain threshold of money on it. I don't know what that threshold is for this project because it's a low-cost project. On a brick and mortar, it's thirty-five thousand. So because it's supposed to target LMI population, you're not supposed to make a lot of money off it. When that five years is up, sort of free game, their money they see is out at that point. You know, it's been amateurized over the course of the five years. So technically, at some point, we could, and originally, when this was a stellar plan, the hope was that our Main Street organizations that exist in the county as well as reps from the, the communities that don't have a Main Street who potentially use it as a revenue source, selling an ad for, so if Lake Fest wanted to put their message up, it's ten dollars for the week or something, I don't know. So there's that potential for all of the boards across the county to do that still. But Oprah sort of would frown upon it in the first years.
Operating and maintenance on this, this comes to mind is the clock downtown and we began to do a problem there and funding for for just ongoing, we're going to maintenance on the sign and routine maintenance, electrical costs, things like that. How is that, is that budgeted? Is, since they were all purchased centrally, I assume they have like a twelve-month warranty or something like that, but if there are a PM schedule.
Probably need to take a look at that and establish that what we do in budget.
Expensive equipment.
I know. I don't know what the, the amount of maintenance on it should or would be, but I would not want to ignore it because it's expensive equipment and not to fail because you don't do something you should have done or we should have done.
Okay, so.
Between Crossroads to, let's see, amount of maintenance countywide on that.
Yeah, it might be cheaper than if we all go in on that.
Political announcements.
Yeah, I noticed that wasn't on there.
Pardon me?
I don't think, because since it's the town, I don't think you can, unless it's like an announcement for a caucus or
you can't put a little.
You could encourage people to vote, I mean, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Something general like that.
Just not restricted.
No affiliation.
Or like informational, I would see, like, they're having a caucus or it's election day, I would see that as an informational
Right.
type of thing rather than.
Civic.
Vote for Bill Gibbons, you know.
What about you?
I didn't want it to be so disturbing.
Okay, moving right along. On that note, yeah, on that note is I think we need to have a, I think we need to vote on the policy because it can always be tweaked, don't you agree to that, Jim?
You know, if I, if you're satisfied with that, the other only comment I had on the policy is you've got a kind of a process for approval, you talk about denials, you need a process on that, like shooty sides.
Yeah, let's do, yeah.
I guess they could appeal to the council and we denied it, right? Like we could write that into our.
I'm just, I'm just being kind of a.
Yeah, no, I think you should be.
I would rather have that, so I have something to call that up.
Yeah.
Well, then let's not do anything tonight, let's put that in there and we'll review it again. Let's do it that way. Okay, moving along. Ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero zero nine, ordinance established an unsafe building fund. Karen?
Yep. So before we kind of venture down the road for four fifteen lakes shore, there had been some talk about establishing a fund for when we work on getting these properties cleaned up, if we put liens on them and then we recruit the lien money and then putting that into a fund that we can then use to mitigate future projects, future cleanup projects. And then just kind of use it as seed money to continue to, to work and improve product or properties, so Bill had approached me and wanted, since we received money for the four fifteen lakes from property, wanted to discuss establishing this unsafe building fund into which the money that we received, less, I think, the legal fees and the, basically the money that we used for that, that took, took the building down.
Just for the demolition of the building?
Would go, would be kind of the seed money into this unsafe building fund. And then that would be accessible then going forward into cleaning up other projects. As other projects are cleaned up, you know, if there's any money invested, it would come back and put it go into this fund.
And if we have to go clean up properties, money coming out, would come out of this fund, it's a two-way street.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not saying build this one up.
Right.
If you all are are supportive or like that idea, I will go ahead and get ordinance drafted and run it past Jim and then you can get that money deposited and get a move on.
I like the idea, but I would also want to see if there were other direct expenses like attorney's fees or things like that, that those get reimbursed and all of that pot just doesn't go in there or the, like the tax payments and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, that was kind of my intention, I mean, we had some sewer liens on that property. Jim had some expenses, so what, you know, the sewer liens need to go back to the sewer sewer funds, Jim's expenses would be returned to the general fund, since that's where they came out. That's why I think, and then just the, the cost for the demolition would go, would go into that one.
And what Karen would like to do is try to get this done all by the end of the month, so we're talking about it tonight and then she would bring back the ordinance in two weeks after reviewing it with Jim and we talk about it again and then move forward. Does everybody agreeable with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a problem.
We'll do it that way.
Bill? Got a quick question if I can ask?
Sure, stand up and state it, state your name.
I was just wondering if, what the.
State your name too.
Bill Stanley. What provisions are for actually accessing that fund, the approval fund? And sure, does council have to meet and say, okay, we're going to spend five hundred dollars cutting grass over there? Or is it something that could be capped in too quickly, like before a meeting or between meetings or something like that? You have a question?
Well, it would be part of the budget, so we would budget that money to say, okay, this year we can spend X amount of money. And then I believe, I guess it would be at the discretion of the, the town manager or whatever and that we're in.
Totalized spend.
With the, with the building commissioner. I mean, obviously, you know, we're, we have a huge process that we have to go to, go through in order to move on if you talk this type of property. And so it's going through this council, we'll see if it's.
I like, if there's a property, grass needs to be cut, it's been cut all summer.
Right, and we have. Right, and we have, we have a process that we go through on that as well. You have to, you have to send a letter, and you have to give them notice and give them opportunity to, to cut the grass. If it's not cut, then we, then we cut it, and then we send them the bill. If that bill's not paid, then we file a complaint on their property.
So would the money for that come out of this fund? Or does it just?
It just, it just comes out of the general budget, so.
Building commissioner on the county level has, is the one that basically is spending that money for other
Right.
demolition projects or cleanup projects or whatever.
Moving on, Marshall County, that appointment?
The Marshall County app, yeah, I can cover this one. Basically, there's now a Marshall County app all for this to you guys, that basically is providing information and resources to Marshall County residents. Just started at the county level. They're extending it to all the communities as another layer of notification. So for things like if there's a boil order in the community or urgency type of thing, you bid, you send a push notification to alert any subscribers. So to get an alert posted during business hours, we go through Clyde Avery or Ward Byers. People can download the app then. So if we're interested in using this app, it's already out there in an app store or through Google Play, and there you go, Jim has it.
It's very good, yeah.
We can put a notice out to the public on this and send it to all of you and start using it through the line.
And what is it called?
Marshall County Indiana app. What it says in the.
Okay.
Email. Just something we thought we should let you all know about.
Next is stellar plan update.
Yeah, well, really, there's not anything new for our stuff on the regional stellar plan update. We're still early Culver's really implementing regional stellar late, later than some of the other communities. End dot application is turned in. We're in preliminary engineering for that. Of course, there's the park project that Amber updated you guys on for this regional stellar plan. Other than that, the Crossroads team is actively meeting again. The subcommittees are actively meeting again. Marketing and communications is ramping back up again, so you'll start seeing some stuff on social media, press releases, et cetera. And as I was telling you earlier, that team is also helping with these ready grants. So that's kind of what's our team does at. Marty, do you want to add anything?
It's a good, good summary. I don't have much more to add.
Town managers' report.
Yeah, I was gonna say we can skip stellar, some stellar plan updates since it's in the town manager's report.
You know what I will say, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
What I will say is, Ginny produced a fantastic quarterly update for OPRGR that was required at the end of June, and it's just a terrific document, and I highly encourage you to read it if you haven't seen it. And Ginny, how can, how can people access?
Technically, it's supposed to go on the Marshall County Crossroads site. It goes out to the Crossroads team. I can send it to all of you as well, and it's much longer than our newsletter that we do here in Culver, but it does give you a nice snapshot of each of the projects going on across the county and where they're at, the status of where they're at. Yeah, you can look it on our website.
Thank you. I mean, it's just a beautiful document, but provides a great update.
So I'm skipping a lot of the town manager report because it's a little bit redundant. So you're sort of updated on all those end dots, trails, stuff. So going down to Lake Shore Drive Rainbow, you guys might have seen that the digging began today, and there's plants going in, so I sent you this yesterday, and that status has already changed, which is why I highlighted that. Then on the next page, we already covered the ready grants. I've listed there some of the ones that the Crossroads team is going to, just so you have a good idea of what those projects are. We covered electronic message board policy. We'll, we'll modify that to include a denial in the process of the content. Bring that back to you at the next meeting. I've called a post-mortem meeting with the Lake Fest committee so we can talk about how the weekend went. Meeting with department heads to get their feedback so that we could go into that meeting and have some productive conversation. Overall, the weekend went really well. Weren't any reported injuries or mishaps or anything like that. So, a lot of people in town. But just wanted to let you know we're having that conversation. The annexation of Tamara Road, I let you guys know we're working with Burke Richardson. I will probably have a document for Jim to review. We have to submit a fiscal plan, and there's a resolution and all kinds of stuff I've not done before, but Karen tracked down what we did on the last one, so I've got that in hand. I think this will come to you once we advertise, probably the second meeting in August is my guess. So we thought we could do it sooner, but it's gonna take a little doing, because I don't want to screw it up, and I'd like Jim to review it before we go and advertise. Stellar quarterly meeting, we already covered that with the newsletter. They canceled that. My guess is they won't have stellar again next year, so we'll see what happens there. Electronic meetings, we've already covered. Oh, I wanted to let you know on the emergency services agreement, I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with Bill Githens and Doug Bird and myself, and get that conversation going again. Now that we have a little bit more background on how some other schools handle that, I think we should go ahead and I have troubles getting more research out of this. I mean, people just don't return phone calls, so I feel like it's time we just go back to that. And then the agreement for the Lake Max Phase Three with Culver Academies, they responded, I forwarded some information late last week to Jim and Mike for their feedback, and so we should be closing the loop on that pretty soon. And Jim, you'll see some feedback from Mike Reese on what he thought about that.
Yeah, and I've already seen some, he's been good about it.
And really, that's all I have. I mean, most, most is old news, good news, I guess.
Thank you, Jenny. Moving on, department head reports. EMS, Jeff, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, Bill. Nothing much more to say other than what the town manager said, the holiday weekend, Lake Fest. A lot of people in town, but a very low impact on us. Other than that, we are seeing an uptick in call volume. And, but we're handling that just fine, and with the assistance with Culver Fire, it's been an added help that's been truly needed, and I'm glad that it's continuing on, and we will develop it more as the time goes on. So I do appreciate their assistance in helping us on these calls as well. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Jeff. Fire? Terry?
Yeah. If you remember back to January, some of you brought up that our budget's probably gonna be a little bit in question a big enough year. Well, the way I've got to figure right now, we have about twelve thousand dollars to make it through the rest of the year. With truck things breaking down, normal maintenance, what have you, I'm just letting you guys know ahead of time that it's gonna go. It's gonna be where I projected it to be. We haven't done anything special or over the edge, or we held everywhere we can. I've been keeping Jenny and Karen and our first out engine had a breakdown two weeks ago during normal testing. It was estimated over the damage. Valuated, and now we're talking maybe four or five thousand dollars for the damage. You guys know we're, we're posting to the rest. Well, that, I'm gonna say probably probably be. The other thing is the EMS runs, we've been running BLS, as you guys know, I think our last twenty runs were EMS runs to assist our goodness. For us, it's a whole different world. It's a different way. So maybe when we're doing our budgeting, we may end up having to change some part of that, because we do have members that are BLS, DNTs, first responders, then we have some that are not. And there's a little bit of, there's always been a little bit of a page turning right there. Some, I don't want to do this, some want to do this, we don't want to do that, and right now we're making this, everybody's doing it. But I don't want to tear it. We don't have enough bin to fight both ways. So we want to do the best that we can to help community, which we've done a lot. It's been, we were pretty busy for quite a while, just every day, two times, three times a day to help our MSO, which gets helped by Rochester, whoever comes in to draw that line. So I'm just letting you guys know that's kind of where we're, we're at as a department. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Wayne?
I really don't have much. I mean, our new recruiter will be graduating here in a couple of weeks before he finishes that. A lot of people here are like this, busy. And more than the usual stuff we deal with, parts will be. See how it goes. We have some critique to do, as Jim said. We're asking better coordination.
Is that all you wanted to talk about, or did you want to talk more about the new recruits and dollars and cents or not?
I did give Karen three sheets. I didn't know she was gonna bring it up. I can bring it up now.
You're on.
I went to Alex a year, January, which just bumped up to pretty much full, full salary. Had a dollar per hour to the two new guys, and I'm hoping on the end of the year, we get them both up to where they're at full salaries to start two thousand twenty-two. Where we're supposed to be.
And your other two guys, Nick and Devin, they're finished school, when in a couple of weeks?
Yes. Graduation, we're talking about something changing.
We need a motion on this salary of increase for Alex to twenty-five cents and then dollars each for the.
Is that when they finish, is that increase when they finish?
They set it to start Monday, which is starting the cycle, which puts them in the same week as that.
Rather, rather than have a backtrack it afterward, the fact, I got you.
I so move.
Is there a second? Motion been made by Bill C. and second one by Bill Ham to raise the salaries for both Alex and Devon and Nick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, sir?
Pretty good of Park. I did want to let you guys know Karen and I are out on Friday for a conference with Indianapolis.
Okay.
Karen's gonna introduce me to that whole world and kind of looking forward to it actually, but we won't be in the office. And then I am out. The following week is when I'm in Carolina, so I'll be out a few days. I was gonna take that Thursday, next week was gonna be gone through Thursday, but I might be back Thursday now, because a couple of people want to have meetings that day. So I'll be out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Thank you for that. Park, Amber, are you on?
Yes, I am.
You're up.
I would also like to present some increases in wages for my employees. We had a few of our lifeguards get water safety instructor certified for our swim lessons. I don't know, do I need to go through them one by one or?
I'm looking at Karen right now, she's digging.
But we have Brianna Small, Alexis Allen, Erin Janey, and Patrick Brandenburg, who, who all got water safety instructor certified for our swim lessons, which comes with a fifty cent per hour increase for their wages. And then the other is Owen Valequit. He also gets a raise for his head of maintenance position versus just the maintenance position, which also comes with a fifty cent per hour pay increase.
And when would those be effective, Amber?
July nineteenth, sorry.
No problem. Is there a motion to that affect to increase those salaries, fifty cents each for the five employees, six employees?
I'll make.
Effective July nineteenth?
I'll make a motion to increase their wages as long as I don't have to name them all.
There you go. Motion been made by Sally, second by Rich, that the names that Amber presented for their fifty cent raise, effective July nineteenth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Amber?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have a concert this Saturday at the De Moore Amphitheater. It'll be the Cold Hearts again, which is a country band out of Indianapolis. It's always our biggest concert, and everybody always asks to bring them back, so hoping the weather holds off and we can have them on Saturday. It's always a really good concert. I also wanted to thank you guys, Ginny and Tracy, for all their work also with the Ready Grant and for including the multi-generational basketball court surface. The Prey family is really excited to hear we're still moving forward with it and doing whatever we can to make it happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it?
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Hildes, Bob, are you on? Bob Porter, are you on? You dropped off, okay. Do you have anything for Bob?
So Bob has been doing some research into some, I think they're called AMI, PMI, radio meters, which would, in the last couple of years, we've upgraded the meters in town to a radio read, so the guys could drive through town, catch every, all the readings. This new system would upgrade it, so Julie can sit in her office at her desk on her computer, press a button, and import all of the readings from town, from all of the residents, which would be huge. Because I can't tell you how many times she gets phone calls from people upset because they have high usage, and she has to go through some steps to get a history, and depending on when they call, you may or may not be able to get that history. This would, once the history is built, it would take some time, but you can, the system would capture three years' worth of history of water usage at fifteen-minute intervals, which is just, there's a lot of benefits. I have to pull up an email, because I prepared something for, to read, because I didn't want to miss anything for Bob. Because I ran it past him this afternoon. So she can also it may help catch some high water. It may help catch some high water usage, you know, issues earlier, especially for our population, where we have a lot of people who have second homes here. That may not be present during the winter of a high burst. You know, they may not get that indication that a pipe has burst until they get the water bill, or Julie calls them to say, hey, you know, something's going on, you have high usage, which is at the end of the month. And so that would be a huge, I think, benefit to the community as well, now, obviously.
And an example of that just occurred with my sister, had an eight hundred and fifty-eight dollar water bill off one linking toilet, but you don't know it until the thirty days is passed.
Right.
This would tell you long before that eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars racks up.
Yeah. So, um, obviously.
Now, there's a cost.
There is.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
So it's good that you're all sitting down. So, and, well, I should add, I should also preface this as well, in that the meter that we're using to read is, it Bob's words, junk. We had one, it got, the company that we worked through brought in a second one for us to use, that one is also not working effectively, so. If we could switch to this, that would make a lot of, that would take a lot of stress off of a number of us. So the cost for the AMI meters is a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety.
What?
That would take the whole town at once.
What?
I told you it was good that you were sitting down.
One fifty-three nine.
And Bob asked me about that, and I said.
One fifty-three, one fifty-three nine ninety?
Yes.
But Karen did figure out.
Yeah, so we're recommending a fifty-fifty split between the water and sewer. And right now, if I took estimates of basically our average income. Per month, and average expenses per month backed from, back to two thousand sixteen. If I, based on my estimations, at the end of the year, if we continue on without this expense, the water. Balance, fund balance would be five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, with the purchase that would take it down to four sixty-one five. Five fifty-six, but that would still be about ninety-four percent of its annual budget. And then for the sewer system, it was. It would take it from six seventy-four down to five ninety-seven forty-seven, and that would be about sixty-six percent of the annual budget. Which is in range of, you know, where we want to be, we don't want to let it go super low.
So we're in healthy.
So our funds are still healthy.
Our funds are healthy even with paying this big expense.
Yes.
Let's back up a second though, Karen, now, basically, the way it's done now, it's labor intensive, is that correct?
It's not as labor intensive as it used to be.
But there's a labor component in it.
Yes, so it used to be the guys had to walk to every single house.
Right, right.
So, and then we upgraded a couple of years ago, and so now there's a radio read, so they just, they drive through town. So there's still some time involved, and we still have some old meters where they actually have to physically go.
Okay.
They do have to read.
My next question is then, so there's a small labor component in this. Now, the other two pieces of equipment that are broken, is that what they were using when they're driving through town?
Yes, and to, yeah, they, they take that with them and they drive through town and it imports all of the readings.
What does that equipment cost, basically?
It's a couple thousand dollars, I don't, I don't have the exact cost, but at this, at that point, then you're just kind of throwing money. At an older technology, and this, this, this technology is, continues moving us further, rather than kind of status quo, so.
Does this, excuse me, does this require changing field equipment also, so, so whatever, whatever reads and transmits the, in the field, those will have to be changed from what they were, or do I currently, or?
That's a good question, because I, when we bought the radio read meters, we anticipated at some point, hoping to go to this level. And so those radio reads have, I believe there's something in there that they don't have to be completely changed out, but there may be something, your computers. So, um, so I'm not sure how much of it has to, has to be replaced. But I think the, more the cost is in the software.
That's a decision that I don't want to make in one meeting.
And that's fine. And that's fine, the timeline is about eight to ten, what'd you say, eight to twelve weeks, I don't know.
To switch over?
To switch over, yes, um, and the company would be happy to come in and make a presentation to you all, if you want, I also have a PowerPoint slide deck. That I can share with you as well, it's, it's more self, you know, you kind of have to read.
But that, down our mind, I think we need.
And that's fine.
Both.
Okay, that's fine, we'll.
Have them come to come in, you know, with Bob, and also, you know, a PowerPoint.
Yep.
Presentation, just so we can digest it.
We'll make arrangements, have them come at the next meeting.
Does that agree, agreeable with the rest of council?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any information, you know, some of the information you gave tonight, if you could at least send that to us.
I will send that too.
Yeah.
And I think that's all, Bob.
I'd say, I'd say thank you, but I don't know.
Well, you know what? If you come and sit in our office for a couple of days and listen to the phone calls that are fielded, this, I mean, at the end of, yes, it's a huge task.
People want us to do an audit of, oh, can you check how much water I used last week, I think I had a leak or whatever.
Oh, I've been there before, I did it once or twice in the years past.
I mean, it's our responsibility, it's a service that we have to our customers, and we want to, you know, if there's an issue, we want to make them aware of it as soon as possible, and this would help us. Make it jump, you know, even faster.
Well, particularly to the residents that go away for four or five months.
Yes, we're the ones who get an eight hundred and fifty-eight dollar bill.
Right.
Is this system in other communities?
Hopefully, that's what the thumbnail tells us.
Yeah.
Some local ones nearby.
At this point, there wouldn't be rate increases, so we are, everything is covered, yes. Now, I can tell you, I mean, we need to look at increasing rates, just because we haven't looked at it for eight years. And I don't want to get into a situation again where we were eight years ago when we raised them, and then eight years prior to that as well, where you're looking at such a large increase that people are having heart attacks, so. You know, we want to, we want to be mindful of that as well, I think there are some components in the system too, that. Will benefit, I mean, we already covered some of those benefits to the customer anyway, so without the rate increase, we can provide some of those.
But, and we can also, with the company coming in, and we know in advance, public can come and.
Oh, yeah.
Listen, and that's what I'm saying, everybody will be on the same page, it's not like we're hiding something.
Excuse me, where are we with those review of the rate increases, did, I know we've had discussions about.
Yeah, it kind of stalled with me, so.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we approved the study.
We did approve the study, we just, it stalled with me.
That's fine, no, I'm not.
Julie, you got another question?
Yeah, just a question about the prompts, like the toilet or the absent homeowner, are you able to set some kind of barrier or trigger, so like if your rates, if your water usage is like, say, twenty percent more than normally is, is there some way, with the new system?
Oh.
Yeah, with the new system, I know, not the old system.
I mean, well, with the old system, we do do that, if you, if any of you have had, had a phone call from Julie at the end of the month. You know, she has, we have a parameter set in our system for high water usage, I have to say, I don't know what that percentage is, but every month she runs that report.
This sounds like it'd be more instantaneous.
It's a little bit more instantaneous, yes.
Yeah, so maybe the problem can fix sooner.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, you can do it on a daily, but, you know, it's reading on a daily basis, or even, you know, every fifteen minutes versus right now, yeah, it's the internet of things, and it's, you know, it's a fun one. Right now, I mean, we read once a month.
Right.
And so if something happened, the day after, we start reading, then it's thirty days before you know something's going on.
Like maybe a day before, you'd say, something's right here.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, right now, it's like, oh, yeah, we've spent enough time on it, so.
Anything else for utilities, that's enough, I think.
Well, in some ways, if you think about it, with the Eastport money that came into the sewer fund, they'd basically be buying software. That makes you feel better. On that idea out there.
Well, it's out there now.
Clearly, we recommend.
Sure, Joel.
Is this a software or hardware?
In vivo, so it's a software to do the reading, but I believe there's some, there's some hardware that would be installed.
Joel, state your name for the. Thank you, sir. Anything else for utilities? Moving on to clerk's report.
This is the stuff I'm more familiar with. Okay, one, um, so I have a couple of claims over two thousand for your approval, or I'm asking for your approval, Jack Doherty Supplies, four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents for some of our pairs, so it was some of the street equipment. Wyland Town Precleavenger and Cerise, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for legal fees, and May fog, eleven thousand five eighty-two, and that was for the EV charging station. Yeah, it's just to be covered.
There a motion to approve the claims over two thousand? Most, most have been made by Bill Cleavenger, seconded by Rich, to improve, to approve the claims over two thousand, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Rich alluded to the ARPA funds, ARPA.
Right.
Uh, I have the application ready to apply for those funds, and figured it's your desire to apply for those funds and receive them and go through all the hoops. Um, because no money is free, I want to remind you of that, um, but I need a motion, I would ask for a motion to allow the president of council to sign the application for that ARPA funds.
So moved.
Motion been made. To approve, they signed the advocate for the ARPA funds. Most have been made by Rich, seconded by Sally, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'll have you sign it, I'll get it submitted tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and finally, it is our, all our favorite time of the year, and budget season is upon us. Um, Jenny and I have started meeting with department heads to review their budgets. And we all take a big gulp, um, and I would like to set some dates for work sessions where to review their budgets with you all. Either. The week of the twenty. The week of the twenty-six, we do have a council meeting on the twenty-seventh, or the week of August ninth. So typically, what we do, just as a reminder, we split it up into two nights, and we could extend it if you wanted to, but we have the, the budgets that are supported by Union Township, which would be. The EMS, fire, and the park present at one night, and then everybody else presents on the other. Mainly because the other night, it's, Union Township isn't involved.
We do prefer to do this before you go on vacation, so you don't have to obsess about it while you're on vacation.
I kind of would, because I know I'm gonna get, you know, slammed when I come back from vacation, but we also are kind of scrambling to get everything done prior to, but I, if. If you, I'll be supportive of doing it the last week in July, that would. Take a little bit of pressure off, as my daughters also go back to school, the week I come back and spend some time with her.
That week is mine with me.
Bill?
Wake up, what?
No, no.
Twenty-sixth of July, oh, and they.
I'm out Monday and Wednesday. Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth.
Okay, well, the twenty-seventh, we've got a council meeting, so could we do one before? And then one on the twenty-ninth?
That would work for me, because I can't do the twenty-sixth.
What time, what time on council day, three o'clock or something? Or later, I mean, I mean, or later, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, well, I mean, if everybody can come at three. Will you go for that, and then you got some department heads that maybe don't have to stay, stay late. Let me get those dates to Marlene and see which might work out better for her, and talk to department heads as well, and.
And get back to everybody?
Get back to you as far as the time and who's going which night.
Okay. That works.
And unfortunately, we'll wait over the over, the over or the under, so.
I know, I've already, I've already written that down.
And let Jim.
Anything else on clerk's report?
I'm passing it off, thank you.
Attorney's report.
Uh, I just have one quick thing, the letters I sent to Mr. Bozma about his property, where he's already asked for a demolition permit, but hadn't followed through with it, came back, both regular and certified mail. I referred the matter to the county unsafe building and the building commissioner, we, we missed the July meeting, but they're going to. Instead of worrying about service process, we're just gonna publish notice, put him on the agenda for the next upcoming county unsafe buildings, that's, we decided it's outside of the town limits. And we're gonna have a finding. The county's getting aggressive and we're gonna start finding people, so the idea will be if the he's not in compliance and bound to be in violation.
They'll take care of it?
I think they're gonna start.
They'll pursue us?
Have it a fine on, yeah, so.
Good.
Try to get that one cleaned up, haven't heard anything back from our friends out of Bispo. Try to.
They haven't done anything.
Yeah, I know, they're, they talk their good game, but.
And what about Brother Cooper?
Uh, you know, that letter came back as well.
Just the certified?
Just the certified, so I assume he got the regular one.
Right.
And I had a conversation again with him. And he was supposed to talk, talk to Chuck further, and I haven't talked to Chuck to follow up.
I don't think they talk.
So I got a note to do that.
Not as of, yes.
I'm not sure they communicate, communicate really very well.
You guys should step in and announce.
I may need to get involved with that, so. Or get, instead of going that way. Yeah, I, I'm aware of that.
Time to move forward, maybe.
Uh, so that's all I have at this point.
Sounds good. Anyone present for utility shut off or an ordinance violation? Hearing or seeing none, time for citizen input. Is there any citizen input online? If so, state your name and address and go for it. Hearing no citizen input online, is there any citizen input in the room?
Joel?
Joel Samuelson, eleven eleven North Lake Shore Drive, I was just curious, the person who funded fireworks designated that this is the weekend he wanted to host. Inside the lake fest, was he also the one who chose the location when the fireworks were set off?
That'd be a question for Lake Fest Committee.
Okay.
Oh, the cha, or the chamber, okay.
Yeah.
Not in a normal lake fest area, that's why.
Right.
Year ago, I can elaborate a little bit on that, because I did the permits and now it comes by. That supposedly is the geological center of the lake.
Yeah, right.
Last year and this year, that's where they did it, because the lake's two and a half miles long, a mile and a half wide, so if you can kind of look at it. It looks like from the festival, you're looking a mile and a quarter down the lake to see those fireworks, you're on the two sides, you're gonna be looking three quarters of a mile to see these fireworks. That's what they wanted last year, that's what they got last year, this year, this came out, the permit came exactly the same as the designated area for them to shoot. I don't know who picked it, why it was picked, but I'm sure you're concerned that, like everyone else that's talked to me, is like, why the fireworks so far away? Can't see it, in here, it doesn't plus not what people, we're used to or expected, I'm saying, I don't, I don't have control over where they do it, but I've had a lot of that come to me, it's like, I couldn't do it.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other citizen input?
I just want to say the fireworks festival next week, we're gonna go at it, try to, we're gonna do a little different, we usually have a raffle every year for people that attend there, we don't go out and solicit, but if you're at the raffle, we can lay a prize or something, sure, we decided to. We have vendors and people from the community that donate, all the people who are out town, we're gonna leave all those people alone, because of the COVID year, we're gonna let them, give them thanks for. Doing what they do, we're gonna have a small raffle, something that we're gonna buy ourselves, just to keep people involved and stay at the station, so, for everybody's information.
Thank you for that, any other citizen, but. Moving on, council issues, Rich?
Nothing.
William?
Nothing.
Sally?
Nothing.
Oh. And I have nothing. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We're done.
I have three minutes.